Good morning. It is Wednesday, February 1st, 2017, 9 o'clock. And we're gathered for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting in Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. We started our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doesn't look like a horribly busy meeting this morning, but we do have some presentations. One, I'd hate to say we didn't expect it, but it didn't make the list, but we're certainly happy you're here. So we'll start with the Sedcor quarterly presentation. Chad Edall?
Good morning. As you said, my name is Chad Freeman. I'm the president here at Sedcor. Thanks so much for the time, and again, really want to express the appreciation from the economic development, for the support and the work from the county. Between the teamwork here, the ongoing support and the relationship we have, you guys have been a very strong supporter of economic development and jobs in the county. And do, you know, I'd like to touch base a little bit, do it a little bit different today, just a quick overview of kind of what some of the trends that we've seen, and then turn it over to Tyler Ferris here to talk a little bit about some of the work that his company is doing up in the canyon. While their firm is not located directly within Marion County, I think he's an absolute critical driver of jobs in the county, as well as up the canyon. And wanted to highlight some of the work that they're doing, and some of the great innovation and investment that they're looking at. So just a quick overview. Within Marion County, we continue to see new investment. We've got about a half million square feet of industrial building under construction right now. I think, thinking back three or four years ago, even three, four years ago, this was pretty amazing to even see some of the work that you've got going on in Donald, with a 200,000-square-foot facility, that Wilco and Oregon Hazel Nut will be utilizing. We've got work at Mill Creek Corporate Center, and recognizing that this is a substantial level of new investment, with about, in the last 12 months, close to $70 million of total investment, created just around job creation. So we continue to see the impacts and the results from long-term investment and focus on jobs here within the county, and so we're excited to be a part of that, and really just see some of that work come to fruition. You've got a report as well in your packet. Certainly welcome any questions now on this or in the future. But with that, would really like to hear more from Tyler, and what's going on up in the canyon. One of our highlights here at Sedcor is, you know, we talk about jobs and investment. It's our job to help companies, and without the work, the investment, and the commitment from the private companies in our region, we couldn't do our job. And it really is these private companies that are the champions and the heroes, and want to hear more from them and highlight some of the work that they do as well. So with that, turn the mic over to Tyler.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys allowing me to come here and speak to you, and thank you for Sedcor for giving me the opportunity. Our company has been in business since 1922, was originally founded by my grandfather in the San Yum Canyon. Over the years, we have grown and grown. Right now, we actually have 480 employees that reside throughout Marion County, as well as Lynn County. Currently, we face unprecedented pressures from imports from different countries, and we are looking at ways to try and add value to the operations that we have to make sure we continue employment. About a year ago, we discovered that there's a new product that is trying to be developed for large and multi-story construction in Oregon, as well as nationwide, called cross-laminated timbers. And so my brother and I traveled to Europe, and we researched exactly what cross-laminated timbers were, and we developed a way to create a mass timber panel out of veneer and plywood based products. Essentially, our base raw material that we construct on a daily basis through our facilities, we have patented a process to create a mass timber panel out of those same veneers and those same plywood panels. And over the last year, we've been under testing with Oregon State University, and with their help, we've perfected the process. So at the end of this next month, we will have a test facility operational in Lyons, in which we'll be starting to do certification testing with third parties. By the end of this year, we'll be constructing an almost 200,000-square-foot facility in order to produce this product, and investing a significant amount of capital in order to do so. This is an innovative, revolutionary product, in our minds, that will create a lot of opportunity for the rural communities and for timber processing up in the canyon. So far, we've had a huge amount of success worldwide, and a whole lot of interest worldwide for the potential to export our proposed product, and we're quite excited about it. But by December of 2017, we're going to be finishing the investment of about $25 million in order to increase our output through the facilities up in Lyons.
Thanks. And I think one of the things that always excites me about that is just here, new technology, new innovation, and then really letting the markets prove and putting significant amount of capital, he said, investing indirectly into our community and into the canyon. So really interested in any questions or thoughts that you guys may have at the commission level as well, that we can help to talk about more about, or areas of interest that you may have for what's going on with the county or up the canyon, or as well as any questions for Nick about some of the work that he's doing. Really wanted to highlight, like I said, bring up the company's perspective as well today, if we take this chance to do that.
Well, thank you. Wow, that's just really, really impressive. Thank you for being here and for sharing what you're doing. So I know that as the county, we're really focused on infrastructure up in the canyon. We're looking at rural development grants, broadband, water systems as you move up into the past Mill City, so in that area, Detroit, Idina, and so on. So to what extent are those systems, I mean, how do those systems impact what you do? Probably what you're doing, you're seeing that you have what you need, but is that going to be of benefit to economic development generally, in your view?
Oh, I think so, especially, you know, within the communities themselves. I mean, everyone looks forward to having internet connection within their homes, even up in Detroit on Idina area, and we've always had a presence in those areas as well. For our specific project, we will be upgrading some of the rail line connections, as well as some of the crossover points into the nearby communities. And we've also helped encourage Pacific Core to put in new substations up in order to provide additional electricity production or capacity up in the canyon area as well. For this facility, we will also be working with Pacific Core in order to try and increase the capacity a little bit more to the residents, as well as to the businesses up in the area. So I think any of those things that help the local community get the utilities and infrastructure they need, help us as well. In addition to the difficulties with getting the labor force that we really need in order to operate our facilities, having the community being such a stable source for people and labor would be very important to us.
Just going to ask one more question?
Sure.
So that's another thing that the county is involved in, is workforce systems. And so are you looking for any particular training for people that, like our workforce development organizations can help with?
Well, for this primary stage, for our product and our project, the reason we're doing this is primarily to provide the stable employment for our current employees, because right now, we don't feel that we can make it on a long-term basis, providing the same sheathing grade plywood products we traditionally have. So we're looking at making new products that are value-added to make sure we're competitive with the overall market and can provide the employment to the 480 people we currently employ. That said, the new facility will employ probably about 15 people on a one-shift basis, 24 on a two-shift basis, and up to 36 people on a three-shift basis. But these are going to be more technical positions, CNC operators, technicians, programmers, and we can't in this current facility use it without, or produce our products without significant automation and robotic assistance.
Well, Tyler, first of all, thanks for coming down this morning. I've had the opportunity to take a tour a couple of years ago of the cogeneration plant and just the production process, and I got to tell you, I came away pretty amazed. I'm not quite, I've been hearing about these cross-laminated timbers, maybe more out of Roseburg than here, but it doesn't matter. I never quite understood, or you could tell people, what are they used for? What do they replace, or what would be the benefits of this new product technology?
The, what we see as the real game changer in the market is being able to offset concrete and steel in multi-story structures. So as of right now, wood frame structures are limited to four stories. So you could put a concrete pedestal, but then you're limited for four stories of wood framing after that. Concrete and steel don't become really cost-effective until you get above 12 stories, so there's a huge gap in the market being able to provide structures for six to 12 stories. What we're able to do is we're going to be creating a 12-foot-wide by 50-foot mat of plywood that's up to 24 inches thick. So if you can think of any type of product that you can cut or CNC out of a 12-foot-wide, 50-foot-long product that that's thick, we can make it, and we can engineer it. So the idea is that we can substitute our wood-based products for traditional steel and concrete structures and multi-story buildings. And we can CNC all connecting points, all electrical chases, all plumbing, pre-engineered into the panel, so when it arrives on the job site, it's like a giant Lego brick. You put it where you want it, you connect it, and you move on to the next story.
So it's a kind of a custom for the job. You can, they tell you what they need, you'll be able to make the size, not just the one size fits all, but you'll be able to customize it to what they're looking for?
Absolutely. Even with current technology, we are able to download the CAD drawings for any structure that's being made by the architects and engineers, download it into our program, and cut specifically to engineering orders. So when the panel arrives on the job site, it will be substantially finished, and just need additional finishing.
Have there been projects using these materials? Has that happened yet?
With our particular product, no, because luckily, we're, we'll see, but we have a patent pending on this process, and so far, we're the only ones that have really proposed this worldwide. We've had a lot of interest in it. But for CLT, yes, the Albina Yard was a four-story construction up in Portland. Vancouver, Canada, just finished an 18-story construction called Brock Commons, that was all made out of CLT structures. And that project actually was able to finish the primary structure within nine weeks, just due to the use of pre-manufactured timber panels.
So last thing I want to say, it's awfully good to hear about a mill building instead of being taken away all around the state. Mills are closing, and to hear one growing, that's good news, and good news for everybody.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. I think we're excited as a company. We've probably been more excited about this, and we've been in a lot of things. I think the environmental benefit really speaks to the product, too. We use primarily all second, third growth type of logs. Our average log size through our facility is only eight inches in diameter, so we don't even discuss larger logs nowadays.
I couldn't hear what you said. How big are they?
Eight inches.
Eight inches? I saw a whole bunch bigger stuff going through on my tour, but.
Well, we have a larger log facility, and that larger diameter is about 15 inches in diameter for an average. But for our primary engineered wood products, it's eight inches.
Really? All right. Thank you so much, Chad.
Yeah, and I think one of the cool things, I think, that we take away and really feel blessed about what we're able to do is obviously, at Sedcor, we focus on helping existing companies, but watching companies that, you know, we're talking about a company that's working with timber and lumber, and a very old industry, but yet we've heard the word terms robotics, CNC, CAD, and some of the, just the technology of being able to totally integrate this, and then how it's at an environmental benefit as well. It's just cool to see is that the technology and the industries continue to grow, and local companies find new ways to create value. It's obviously exciting for us as well, so thank you.
All right. Nick, you don't have anything for us this morning? You always got good news. Give me one little dose before you leave.
To try and help companies like Ferris with their new product, the school district in Dayton is, has 10 kids building a house. Tomorrow morning at 7:30, I'm meeting with Todd Miller, superintendent at the Canyon School District, to talk about the skill sets that these guys seek, that they'll need in their future employees. And we're doing that all over the county, thank goodness. Mount Angel has now hired a vocational teacher, because we need a pipeline of employees with the right skills. I think another thing Tyler mentioned to me earlier this morning was the distance that these MPP panels can span with minimal support, which reduces the cost and the time of construction. It's pretty exciting.
Yes. I was wondering, maybe, I'm sure you've thought of this, but especially I'm thinking Sandy M. School, if they, if take some kids up and take the same tour I did, I think it would open some eyes, and I don't know if you've done that, but I might suggest it, that it was impressive.
We are open to giving anybody tours at any time, and we try to focus on the schools as well.
Great.
We're pretty proud of what we do, so we don't mind showing people if anyone would like to stop by and visit.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Let's see, I have an agenda here somewhere, but I think I know what I'd like to do next. Thank you. We have, we have an employee that's been very dear to us that's decided to leave. Shelley Wilkins Ahinger, still after all these years, probably don't say it right, but I try. So Shelley, let's just start. Would you mind, would you mind just coming over and sitting there, and we're going to say a few things?
I can't say no.
It might not be painful. It could be all right.
See how he treats me?
Right.
My family.
So Commissioner Carlson said she wanted to say some nice things first, and then we'll get the rest out.
You want me to go ahead? Well, I just want to let everybody know how much we have appreciated Shelley's service to Marion County Housing Authority. She has been a light to this organization. She is technically brilliant. She is such a hard worker. I mean, hours and hours and hours. I know how much time you, I mean, you describe briefly how much time you put in, and I probably multiply that times 10, because you're also a very modest person, and don't generally blow your horn in front of people, except when, a couple times when you went, "Ah, I'm just so overwhelmed." But it was a huge job when you came in, and you have, there were a number of things that you uncovered that absolutely needed to be fixed or cleaned up, and you jumped in and did the job, and you're leaving with the organization in really good shape, and we so much appreciate that. And then on top of your day job, which was really a major undertaking, I really appreciate the additional work that you did to help with the reentry housing initiative. You know, that's an issue that's very near and dear to my heart, and I really couldn't see a path to how we were going to actually get there until you came. And when I realized what talents you had, I asked if you would participate in our work groups, and you have just been such a contributor to that, and really made it possible, and helped us see a path to success there.
Thank you.
So we will miss you tremendously. We are, at the same time, very excited for the opportunity that you have, and personally wish you well in your new endeavor. And as we've discussed privately, don't be a stranger, and I know we'll be calling, because I'll still have questions and things that I'll need your help with, but just wanted to take this opportunity to honor you and thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I should just leave it there. No, it's all good. But my, our staff has prepared a page for me that suggested I read, so I'm just going to do that. Shelley started as our housing director September 2013, so not quite four years, but accomplished a whole bunch. And under those accomplishments, improved community relationships, improved partnership with local nonprofits to provide supportive services to clients, outreach to residents to ensure housing authorities meeting their needs, instilled a client-first culture, which I think is very important, streamlined services, paperless application process, staff assistance for those not comfortable with technology, which would be me, trained library staff and other community partners to assist with application. A big project, secured funding, and we took a tour of it just a couple of weeks ago for improvements to Wood Park Terrace Apartments in Woodburn. It's coming along, just wrapping up, actually looks so much better. Participated in work group for parole and probation transitional service project, and other, participated in Citizens Sheriff Citizen Academy to learn more about law enforcement. And I think it says she's glad to be staying in the Salem area, or we're glad, I'm not sure which. But then my two personal ones. Took over an organization that was heading, in my words, disaster, and cleaned it up and set it on the right path, and I couldn't be more pleased. And the final test with me is I'm sad you're leaving. So you did good.
Thank you all. Thank you. And I can only say that I learned my public service direction from you all. You all were very supportive of me from the very first day that I came to the agency. If I needed you, you were available. If I needed to be scolded, that happened too. And then it was in a loving way, very loving way.
I would never do that.
It was in a loving way. And I think the greatest compliment that I did receive from individuals was that if you're trying, we're here to be supportive of you. And so that gave me what I needed to continue to move forward, and I do appreciate each and every one of you as well.
Great. So if you'll meet us right here.
Now, we had ethics training yesterday. Anything over $50?
This is nominal value. Is it part of my compensation? You have to sell it.
You be in the middle, and we'll take a picture.
There you go. Beautiful. Thank you. Oh, how gorgeous. Oh, this is beautiful.
I don't know. Yeah, it is on. Let me read it, see. "And appreciated of your dedicated and committed service to the people of Marion County." Pretty good.
Thank you all so very much. Why are you doing that?
I'll try to look at it.
Thank you. Oh, that's beautiful. Thank you. And we'll be seeing each other.
Oh, excellent. We'll be around everywhere.
So cute. Sorry.
All right. Now, we made you wait, and I'm sorry. The one presentation that was on our agenda this morning has to do with the 2016 Santa Central results. It says Lisa Miller, Stacy Bruman, and Mandy Strauss, but I see a whole lot of other people. So Stacy, would you tell us about the project and?
Got an infant here.
Yes. Did I bore, you ever heard of death already?
I apologize. He wasn't supposed to be here, but there was a little conflict.
I like him.
Oh, good morning, commissioners. Lisa Miller, Business Services. So we think the holidays are past, but we just have one more gift that we need to wrap up. Our Santa Central project had another successful year fundraising and gift-giving, and so this morning, we're here with Stacy Bruman from Business Services, and Mandy Strauss, the vice president of Marion Polk Foster Parent Association, and they're going to give you a little wrap-up of our Santa Central program.
Well, good morning, commissioners. I am Stacy Bruman from Business Services, and I'm here today, and I'm really excited to be here on behalf of the Santa Central Committee. For the last 15 years, Marion County has partnered with the Marion Polk Foster Parent Association to help bring holiday gift wishes to local foster kids in our community. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the commissioners and county employees for their continued generosity to this program. Without their faithful support from year to year, we wouldn't be able to fulfill so many gifts for local foster kids in our community. Originally, this program was run out of the sheriff's office, and then in 2013, Business Services, and specifically the Sunshine Committee, took it over to help it continue on. So without the dedicated support of the Sunshine Committee that kind of doubles as our Santa Central Committee from November to December, I think this program would be almost impossible to pull off every year. So I'd like to take a moment, most of them have joined us today, I'd like to take a moment to thank them, so if you could stand when I call your name. We have Mary Betcher with us, and then Lisa Miller, of course, and Kathy Carter, Cynthia Granite here, and then Brenda Phillips and Tracy Fisk could not join us, but they also help us run the program, and we're so very grateful for that. And in addition to that, the people out in the departments who help us collect all the gifts and are diligent to follow up with staff that have volunteered to bring gifts, we wouldn't be able to do it without them. This year, through the generous support of Marion County employees and the community, we raised nearly $10,000 through donations, gifts, that type of thing, people who bought soup at the fundraisers, Candygrams out at Public Works. So it doesn't matter how you chose to participate, if you shopped, or donated a gift, or donated money, you had an impact on 386 kids, foster kids in our community, and that's a big deal. And so we're very thankful for the generosity of county employees. And I've got Mandy here with a special foster child today who I don't think got specifically impacted, but she's going to talk a little more specifically about the numbers, and then also tell a story specifically how this, how our help every year impacts the program.
Good morning. Thank you for having, thank you for having me. First of all, we just, on behalf of the association, we just want to say thank you. This program is, I can't even put into words how grateful and appreciative it is to the foster families here in Marion and Polk County. They so appreciate the generous hearts and the graciousness from everybody through their gifts, and it was just, it was a fantastic year. Just to kind of give you an idea, right now, in Oregon, there's 7,638 kids in foster care. Specifically in Marion County, we have 567 kids in care. In Polk County, we have 123 kids in care. So with those numbers, it's, it's, I mean, it's a sad, it's a sad situation. And so having Santa Central and having the Holiday Wish program, it really takes a burden off of, off of the foster parents to have to, as they get last-minute placements. Our little guy here, we got a call on Christmas Eve, asking us to pick him up at the NICU. So just, just for an example, it's, you get that last-minute phone call, and you don't have a lot of time to plan and budget and squeeze in an extra gift here and there for a kiddo. So this year, it just, we had, we had so many tears of thankfulness from the foster families, and so we just, we so appreciate what you guys are doing. We also, it was exciting this year, we partnered with, for our annual picnic in August, we reached out to the sheriff's office, Marion County Sheriff's Office. My husband happens to be a deputy, and so he rounded up a couple of his buddies, and through undersheriff Troy Clausen, we got a few of the deputies out to our annual picnic, which the impact this year that we, that they had on our picnic this year just was amazing. We had several teens, foster teens, that were scared, that were scared of police officers. They were scared of interactions between police officers, and these deputies came out, they jumped in a bounce house, they did face painting, they did, they made snow cones, they let them talk on the walkie-talkie speaker, you know, thing from there to announce the door prizes and stuff, and these kids just, I mean, by the end of the two-hour picnic, they're saying, "Can I get a picture with that police officer? Can I get a picture with that deputy?" And so it was just, it was amazing. It was amazing to see how just, how we can bring, you know, our community together and support these kids that are hurting and are broken, to have a positive experience. So that was, that was just an amazing, amazing experience to just kind of tie in, to go into our Holiday Wish program this year, was just the bond and the excitement that these kids had, knowing that even our, even our law enforcement, that they're safe, that they're the good guys. And so that was, that was really exciting. Just to share a quick personal story of one of the kids that was, that was gifted through the program this year. This little guy came into care in September of 2015. He was five months old and abandoned by his mama on a porch up in Washington County. She left him on her drug dealer's porch, and she, 2:00 in the morning, and she just drove away to California and never came back for him. This little boy actually. This little boy actually is now going to be a permanent member of our family here next month. We're adopting him, and he's going to be Jacob Strauss, so we're pretty excited about that. But these are some of the stories that, of these kids that just come from heart, heartbroken spots. And so you guys, by doing this for these kids and these families each year, it's a gift. It's a gift that we can't even put into words how appreciative we are. So thank you. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. And you didn't really introduce your friend, so.
Oh, yes. This is JJ. JJ's six weeks early. He was six weeks early, but six weeks old. So he's just brand-new, and he's staying with our family for a time, for a season. Not sure how long, but yeah.
Before you go, thank you so much, and Stacy, Lisa, and all of you that are involved. You have little helpers around the county, I can tell you, because they kind of make sure everybody participates, happy to do it. But it's a pretty big effort, and I thank you for leading it. Commissioner?
Yeah, well, congratulations, too, on the results this year. That's huge. Is that the most that you've, that they've ever done? The $10,000? That's amazing.
This has been the biggest year that we have.
Anything that, as a board, we can do to further support it, that you can think of? What do you need?
I don't think so. We are going to, as our board is growing, I'm the Vice President of the Board. Because I live in Polk County, I'm kind of overseeing Polk County's area. I'm the first board member that's come on that actually lives in Polk County. The other, Mandy, there's another Mandy. Mandy Augsberger is the President of Marion, of our Board, and she's focusing more on Marion County. We have co-partner now with the Program Director of Marion County DHS, as well as the Polk County DHS Director and Program Manager. And we're going, this year, we're going to try to solicit and bring on Polk County Sheriff's Office and Polk County's Commissioners Board to partner with us, so that we can hopefully do more to serve more families and whatnot. So we can extend our, maybe our deadline out a little bit, you know, further, and be able to serve even more families. So that way, you guys aren't taking the whole, the whole brunt of it. But right now, our number, like, we had 176 kids from Marion County and 44 kids from Polk County. So obviously, Polk County's a little bit smaller, but we are, we're in the same district together, and so we do want to bring in our community partners from Polk County and start meeting with them as well. So, but, you know, you guys have gone above and beyond, and we thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking if there's any way we can do outreach to the community to make people more aware of it, that might be something we could help with. So just let us know when you have information you want to get out, you know, like, if you want people to come to events or whatever. I mean, I'd be happy to share it, and I know we have large email lists.
Oh, that would be great.
Around the county, so.
That would be great.
And we can put it in our newsletter, too. I think, I don't know if Jolene's still in the back, right?
That would be great. We basically have two big events a year, and that's, we do a, well, three. We do a dinner for the foster fam, for the foster parents in April. And then our big community events are in August. We do a big picnic, and we invite the families to come to that, and the kids get free backpacks that Marion County and Polk County CASA usually, oh, excuse me, end up recruiting and soliciting for backpacks and school supplies. So we give out the backpacks and the school supplies, and then clothing that's been donated. And that's at our picnic in August. And then we get full force into Holiday Wishes for Christmas. So those are our two big kind of fundraising, big events that we, you know, that we go for, so.
Well, don't be shy.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
And from the Sunshine Committee, keep buying soup.
All right.
Do you eat much?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is our consent calendar. Just one item today. Commissioner, if you would.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I would go ahead and move today's consent calendar, and the one item is under Public Works, approve the intergovernmental agreement with East Salem Service District for Stormwater Management Services, provided by the Public Works Department through June 30th, 2021.
I'll second the motion. It's a motion seconded to approve the item having to do with East Salem Service District. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and motion passes. Three business, or three action items this morning. The first is under Business Services. We consider approval of an order appointing Jan Calwait, Carrie Klosterman, and Richard Berger, and reappointing Stephen Bergman and Joshua Graves to the Marion County Compensation Board with terms ending December 31st, 2017. Amy Rose Fish and Lisa Miller, looks like it's Lisa. I thought you were all members of the Sunshine Committee and wondered why they didn't. But you could be.
Oh, we can still recruit.
All right.
Good morning again, Commissioners. For the record, Lisa Miller, Business Services. So we're here this morning to bring forward a recommendation for some members for our Compensation Board. Our Marion County Compensation Board, the purpose of the Board is to determine a compensation schedule for our Marion County elected officials. The Board consists of three to five community members who have knowledge in personnel and compensation management, and they are normally brought in for one-year terms with the option of returning on a regular basis if they would like to return. So this year, we have two returning members who were not able to be here this morning that were recommended for reappointment. Steve Bergman and Joshua Graves, served last year and have been asked to come back and graciously agreed. And then we have three new volunteers this year to serve on the Compensation Board. They're here with us today to introduce themselves and answer any questions that you may have. So here on my left, I have Jan.
Oh, I didn't do that good today.
Calwait, Calwait, Carrie Klosterman, and Richard Berger.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jan Calwait, and I'm happy to serve. Right, what do you want me to say? Two minutes about myself, one minute, sixty seconds?
Um, where are you from?
Okay, I was born and raised in Germany. I moved here about almost twenty years ago. I work for the state just up the street, Department of Consumer and Business Services. I've worked for the state almost fifteen years, mostly as an operations and policy analyst, management analyst. I've done some volunteer work for the city, served on my neighborhood association board, the Salem Public Library Advisory Board, and still currently serve on the Budget Committee. And if my name sounds familiar, I ran for City Council for this district right here, and unfortunately, I lost. And so I'm trying to see where else I might fit in, do some volunteer work, and I came across this opportunity, and here I am. Thank you.
Hello.
My name is Carrie Klosterman. I am currently the Director of Research and Compensation Services at Cascade Employers Association. I've been with Cascade for nearly sixteen years, first time on a board, so I'm excited to be here.
Hello, Commissioners. Richard Berger, I am actually a lifelong resident of Salem, and I work at Mountain West Investment here in Salem, project manager there, and have done numerous volunteer things in the community, was Board President of the YMCA, served on the Salem Budget Committee, and have previously worked at the Legislature as a committee administrator, but currently work at Mountain West developing real estate.
Go ahead.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for being willing to step up and be on the Compensation Board. Thank you for your service that you're going to give us in the future. It's a very important board, because it's actually required by statute. We don't set, as a Board of Commissioners, the salaries of the elected officials by ourselves. We take a recommendation from you, and that's required by law and a really important part of what we do. Spent a little time, I've spent a little time learning more about the compensation system in Marion County. We had a work group that went on for, what, about a long time? I can't remember how many meetings. We had lots of meetings and consultants and things like that. And it is, it's a complex system to be able to figure out in terms of how everything fits together, but we need the expertise that you bring. So I really appreciate you being here. Jan, I actually very much appreciate your run for City Council, and was disappointed, but I think that I really appreciate you coming over to Marion County and being willing to serve over here. So Salem's loss is our gain, I guess. So very pleased that you chose Marion County to be part of. And I do want to say, I was a committee administrator also at one point, so, good training.
I don't know why I'm thinking about this, but Jan posed in a picture with me at the chamber, and that might have been his, I don't know, at least it hasn't been traced back to the cause of his disappointments.
Oh, yeah, mistake.
I did get some flack for that.
Anyway, thank you, and I think we're ready for a motion.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'm making all the motions for there now. All right, so, Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the order that appoints Jan Calwait, Calwait, Carrie Klosterman, and Richard Berger, and reappoint Stephen Bergman and Joshua Graves to the Marion County Compensation Board with terms ending December 31st, 2017.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Again, thank you very much for stepping up to perform the service and for coming in today to let us re-meet some of you.
Ah, we get to go to dogs now.
We're going to the dogs? Is that what you said?
We are.
All right. Community Services. Next item, we consider approval of an ordinance revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 6.05 relating to dog control, and declaring an emergency. And Bruce Armstrong, Tamara Getch, and Dean Fries have showed up. Dean, you're not on the list, but it looks like you want to start.
Yes, I sure do. Thank you so much for your time this morning. I'm Dean Fries, Manager of Marion County Dog Control and the Dog Shelter, although today, we are here to talk about animal rescue entities, which includes all animals, not just dogs. So specifically, I'd like to talk about and give you some background as to how we got to where we are now and why we're asking that we could amend the code relating to animal rescue entities. So let me first take a few minutes and provide some background. The animal rescue entity, or what we call R, ARE, encompasses all animals. Back in 2013, there was an unfortunate set of circumstances that happened with a dog rescue called Willamette Animal Rescue. There were over a hundred dogs in a warehouse. It was a horrible situation. The conditions were unspeakable. And the problem was that we had a difficult time gaining access to even get in, to help the dogs and circumvent the situation. What we discovered was that our dog control officers could not gain access. And this, this set of circumstances prompted Commissioner Carlson, which we sure appreciate the work that you did with Senator Peter Courtney, and the result was that Senate Bill 6 was born. And that, in part, helped Marion County Animal Control to have more authority to gain access if there were an animal rescue that was in question. And in addition, there were other elements of that, for example, holding animal rescues accountable with registration. The registration costs are $75 a year, for two years, $125, and three years, $175. But more important than the actual costs, it's the ability to have that accountability. For example, our dog control officer, Karen Hilfiker, is currently in charge of annually making an audit on all animal rescue entities. And this is a built-in piece of that accountability. So although Senate Bill 6 came about in 2013 or early 2014, Senate Bill 4 followed that up to try to work on closing some loopholes that we discovered once we implemented Senate Bill 6 into our code. So at this time, I'd like to pass off to Tamara to provide any details of the background that I missed, so that you could have an understanding as to why we are here this morning to present more things.
So thank you. Good morning. Tamara Getch, Director of Community Services. I think Dean did a great job in kind of overview of what the process was. I think that we spent in Marion County a lot of time in collaboration with legal counsel and the Board of Commissioners Office to really look at the impact of Senate Bill 6 that was, came into being in 13 legislative session, and then also in the 15 session, Senate Bill 4. We looked at the implications to Marion County's process. We really didn't have others to look to, which we have, and many times, we can look at other counties, how they're doing this, but we were kind of some mavericks, some pathfinders in this particular piece of legislation and trying to identify what that means to Marion County. Had some really great dialogue in that, and began to put that into place through our own implementation into our dog code. But as we did that, in working with legal counsel, we recognized that there was the loophole that really did not protect, instill the protection that was intended. And Bruce is going to talk a little bit more about that, but it was really around legal custody versus physical custody and foster homes, and some of the language that it included in the original bill. But I think that the great thing about the process was that we were able to take the time to process through what that meant in Marion County, what it would look like to the public, and then how would we then begin to market that. So we looked at the whole piece, implementing it, and then putting it into place. So Bruce, you want to talk a little bit about what changes?
Sure. For the record, Bruce Armstrong, Assistant Legal Counsel with Marion County Legal Counsel. Now, you've had two great backgrounds on how we got here today. And the Legislature in 2013 created this legislation to address a horrible problem, and they passed the burden on to counties. And when we were, as Tamara noted, we were working through the issue, we delved into it, worked with the Board, and to try and get clarification on the way the Legislature defined an animal rescue entity, they laid it out if you're a, if you have custody, and they used the term custody and didn't say physical or legal, just custody of ten or more animals, and then you take donations. So we tried to work that, and in our initial definition, we included physical or legal custody to flesh it out. And Commissioner Carlson, I think, took a bit of a lead at that point to seek clarification on what the Legislature intended, and worked with the work groups that had worked closely with Senator Courtney to develop this legislation at the beginning. And after some meetings and queries of what was the intent, the response was, the intent was just to cover legal custody. And what we were dealing with was, the reality on the ground was, that so many of these rescue entities farm out the animals or have foster home, foster providers, because they can't, they don't have the capacity to house and maintain dogs, cats, whatever the animal may be, at maybe one facility, but they have interested individuals who want to help. And so you can have three dogs here, three dogs there, a dog over here, and it becomes questionable whether an entity gets to that ten or more level. So with clarification, after going back, and that's what resulted in Senate Bill 4, was to clarify that the definition of an animal rescue entity only apply, it applies to the entity that has legal custody, the entity that has the decision-making authority on where the animals go, who gets to adopt, or all the decisions about the animal. So that's what the legislative change in Senate Bill 4 was, to get clarification that it's just, an animal rescue entity is the entity that has legal custody of the animal. So that's what these changes, that's the primary change that we wanted to get at here, is to bring our code up to speed and up to date with what the new legis- is to bring our code up to speed and up to date with what the new legislation implemented. And while doing that, we wanted to clarify a few other things. There had been, when we, as a group, were implementing this, we included, within our definition of the 10 or more requirement, but we, in our discussions, had indicated that it meant an entity had 10 or more animals at one point in time. But our code didn't include that phrasing, and so there was some dispute, or some believed, or some understood our code to mean that if you have 10 over a one-year period, you cumulatively have 10 animals or more, that this code provision would apply. Our interpretation had been that it's, if you had any, at any day, at any point in time, if you have 10, or 11, or 12 dogs in your legal custody now under the law, that this registration requirement would apply to you. So you can see in the amendments, first, we seek to remove the references to physical custody and match our definition of an animal rescue entity to what is now in the ORSs and the statutes. We also include the reference to the 10 or more at any single point in time, that you have the obligation to register, obtain a registration certification from Marion County. And we also included requirements that if someone is obtaining a registration or renewing, that they have to make certifications, that they will comply with all the legal standards that apply to housing animals and maintaining animals in a safe and appropriate manner, and that certify, that the entities also certify that they'll provide records and information upon our request, if we're investigating or looking into it, so that they sign off and say affirmatively that they will do those things. And then the only other change is that our, we call it a registration certificate, and just, we included language to clarify that if you get that registration certificate, you're in compliance with the statute which uses the term licensing. So those are the, kind of the, the main thing is the addressing the legal custody, that that's what an animal rescue entity is. And then we did a few cleanup matters also. I'd be happy to answer questions.
I only have one, so if you wouldn't mind, it seems, I just want to hear you say it, but the change, entity kept housed or maintained elsewhere, and why wouldn't it say elsewhere in Marion County? By what interest do we have in other counties or around the state or the world?
That, that language, whether physi, this was added, this was specifically language that the legislature added to the definition of animal rescue entity, whether, so, and that relates to having legal custody of 10 or more animals, whether physically located at a facility operated by the entity, or kept housed or maintained elsewhere. And I think, and that was intended to get at, you're not seek, and they actually, the other piece they took out was, there used to be a reference to foster homes, foster in, within this definition, that is being removed also. It's, the idea of this, it doesn't have to do with a county, it's more about the entity itself, that you don't have physical possession of the animal at your location, but that the animal can be elsewhere. Maintained, housed outside of your physical control, but again, you have a legal control. So that, I don't read that language to, it's not intended to indicate in a county or out of a county. It may be in a county or out of a county, but it's intended to address that legal, that physical custody issue.
Let me respond to that, too, because I think what we were looking at was the loophole, if you will, was that you're looking at where the rescue entity as an organization, as a legal organization, where is it housed? Where does it exist? So if you have a company that, you know, a business that forms that wants to be an animal rescue entity, if their main office is in Marion County, then we're going to be responsible for them. If their main office is in Clackamas County, then we're not. I think that's what we talked about. But to determine whether they are over 10 animals or more, if they're in Silverton and they've got nine animals in Silverton and one in Malala, they still have 10, and we're responsible for them because they're a Marion County business, right? Isn't that the way it works?
Correct.
If they, if their home company is in Malala and they have one there and nine in Silverton, we're not responsible for them, because their parent company is in Clackamas County. So that's kind of how it divvies up in terms of county responsibility. So, you know, that will probably, in the North County, on the canyon, there's going to be those issues about who's on first, but I think there was also the understanding that there'd be some coordination and communication across county lines to make sure that everybody was doing what was fair to that county. And for the most part, we're going to find them all within our county or within another county. There's probably not going to be that many instances where they're that far from each other.
Absolutely.
And I'd just remind folks, too, part of the responsibility is the administration oversee, you know, this gives us an ability to get into the records of the animal rescues if needed. We can do an annual review, audit of their records of the animals that they've had in their control, under their custody. And if there are any questions about that, and the legal entity is housed in Marion County, that would be our responsibility to oversee the administration of the records within that rescue entity. And to Commissioner Carlson's example, but if a legal entity is housed in Clackamas County, the administration responsibilities would then follow that county's control, dog control or animal control responsibilities. Does that help?
Yep.
Okay.
And if I could circle back to, as Dean framed it, what this, what all this legislation allows is if you have a similar situation where there's a bunch of dogs or cats that are housed in a place, and you can't get, and police can't get in, or deputies can't get in, you don't have to meet the legal standard for a criminal warrant, you don't have to establish that a crime has occurred. If you do, you can get in, but if you run into that hurdle, and you can't overcome that hurdle to establish reasonable belief that there's a crime has occurred, all you have to establish is that there are 10 or more animals, and they're taking donations, and often with Facebook and things like that, that's a much easier burden to meet, then you can get an administrative warrant. That is, it's a much simpler process. You can get people in to inspect, and when they inspect, and if there's crime, obvious crimes, then it can be pursued criminally.
I have a couple of questions, comments. First of all, I got a lot of credit on this, and I just need to say, I didn't do anything on Senate Bill 6. I was, in 2013, I think Commissioner Cameron was actually a legislator during that time. I really, and this, it was a very important bill to Senator Courtney, and I'm hoping he's not listening, because I didn't, I wasn't even aware of the bill until after the session was over, and Tammy and Bruce came to the board and started trying to develop this implementation ordinance for us to be able to figure it out. I think Sonia was part of that discussion as well. And there was discussion about databases, and, you know, trying to find out where people were, and I think the board got a little uneasy with all of the administrative burden of it, and, you know, whether it was a unfunded mandate, that kind of thing. But there was such a lack of clarity in the language of the statute, as you were going through, as you mentioned, going through and trying to figure out how to make it work. And so that's where I picked up on it and said, well, if it's unclear, let's just go back and figure it out. So I contacted Senator Courtney's office, and Anna Braun, who is Legislative Director, pulled together the interest groups that had put the bill together in the first place. And, of course, they were very passionate about animals and were very concerned about changing anything that might diminish the original intent of the bill. And at the same time, I think what we learned, too, is that there was, they had a hope that we would go farther than what the statute required. I mean, they really want inspections of all of these places, but the statute doesn't require inspections. And so what we're doing is what the statute requires, with the idea that then we have the opportunity to go in. I think there's, there is an inspection process, right, originally?
Correct.
But it's not like you're going to do annual inspections of all of these places, which I think is what they had hoped would occur. But when, but I think what was really helpful, and so that's where you guys get the credit, is that when they heard about what we were, what we were facing, those, that confusion on the ground level, and here's how it's playing out in a county that is in good faith trying to implement the bill that you all wanted, and here's where we're running into hurdles, they were very receptive to the idea that we could make, and it wasn't really a very large change. I think it was just a word or two that was, from the original bill, that allowed us then to have that clarity around who's on first, around county lines and that type of thing. So, I mean, that's, it's a really good example of how the state legislature can partner with counties, and we were kind of the feet on the ground in terms of how things happen, because they put words on paper, and then we are the ones that oftentimes have to implement those services. So anyway, I want to thank you for your work, because if you hadn't come here and said, boy, this is confusing, I never would have contacted Senator Courtney's office. And then also, you came over and helped with the testimony, and it was, it was really funny, because I watched Senator Courtney's floor speech on the bill, and he actually named us in his floor speech, and said, they found a loophole, it was a loophole. So I just thought it was really dear. So here's my question. First of all, this past Senate Bill 4 in 2015, but this is, we actually had kind of taken a stab at the idea that it was physical or legal custody. So we've, even though this is coming a year or so later from when it was actually implemented, we've been kind of acting as if Senate Bill 4 is in place, right? So we're just kind of formalizing the practice that we clarified when the bill was passed. Is that correct?
Yes, our program, our program is live and well. It is growing. We have Dean 22, current AREs that are registered, and we've done a round of administrative reviews, and we continue to pursue animal rescue entities who we believe could be under this part of our code, to be in compliance with that, and working with them to understand what this means and the supports that we can offer. We have checklists, and it's on our website, so folks can go on there and understand a little bit more. The code, after we get approval, this will also be on our website, too, so people can go on and look on the Marion County Dog Control Code, so they can see what that means specifically, and call and ask questions. We're here to help. We want, we're not wanting to be the punitive, you know, enforcement. That is a role we may have to play in the future. However, our first role is to really, to serve the public and to help entities who are under this part of our code to be in compliance, and help us in keeping our dogs, our animals, and our community safe.
And so my last question is, so what has been the response of those 22 entities? I mean, generally, people that do animal rescues are passionate about animals. Were they aware of the intent of the legislation? Have they been generally open to doing the registration? Have you run into any people that are cranky about it, or how's that working?
Well, yes and no. I think that most are very compliant and understand it and agree with it and don't complain. We did have, late last year, a very interesting situation where somebody tried to manipulate that to adopt a certain dog for less money. So to pay $75 and be an animal rescue, they could get this dog that they really wanted, that they saw on the website, instead of paying the $175. So we were able to work through that, and, but that's just a, probably a very rare example of somebody that wasn't too happy about the situation and wanted to be a one-dog rescue with the dog they wanted to adopt. But a better example is, in September, we had some complaints about a certain rescue that turned out that was disgruntled employees who were the whistleblowers, but we did go in with Officer Hilfiger to investigate, to make sure that this was, they were in compliance, and turns out that it was perfectly fine. And then they discovered, well, it's the employees that were disgruntled that blew the whistle and said we were doing all these things. So it's working, we just want to tighten it up.
All right, this is an ordinance by emergency, so accept the motion to read by title only twice.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I would move that the chair read this ordinance by title only twice.
I'll second the motion to read by title only twice. Further discussion? Hear any, then call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes, and I'll do that now. Read this by title only twice. This is an ordinance revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 6.05 relating to dog control and declaring an emergency. And for a second time, an ordinance revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 6.05 relating to dog control and declaring an emergency.
Okay, now, Mr. Chair, I would move now the ordinance that revises and updates Marion County Code, Chapter 6.05 relating to dog control.
I'll second it. So the motion is to approve this ordinance or changes. Any other discussion? And I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, so I hope it works like you want it to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The last action item this morning is under Public Works. We consider approval of a contract for services with Universal Recycling Technologies LLC for $697,500 for the transportation and recycling of non-rechargeable batteries through December 31st, 2021. Brian May is here, and for my sake and everybody's, that is not an annual number, so.
That is correct. For the record, Brian May, Public Works Environmental Services Division Manager. Before his consideration of the approval of five-year contract with Universal Recycling Technologies for the transportation and recycling of non-recycle, or non-rechargeable batteries collected by Marion County. To give a little background, a little history, Environmental Services encompasses more than just solid waste. We have, as part of our Environmental Services team, four very eager, very talented waste reduction coordinators that work diligently on educating and providing programs that allow Marion County residents to reduce, reuse, recycle, and compost materials used within Marion County. This program was originally suggested, the battery program, that is, in 1999 by our Solid Waste Management Advisory Council. They partnered with our Mid Valley Garbage Recycling Association in 2000 to move this to one of the nation's first curbside collective programs. In your packet, you have a graph that kind of shows the number of pounds recycled each year since the program started. Through 2016, Marion County has recycled 1,956,441 pounds of batteries. It's a significant number. In an average year, it's about 150,000 pounds. And if you look at that graph, you can kind of tell that thing kind of goes all over the place. And I want to point out the fact that that is not based on the inconsistency of our recyclers. That's an inconsistency in shipping. We try to consolidate these loads to take economies of scale for shipping costs, so it's more of a shipping delay that causes the majority of these ups and downs within our graph system here. In addition, the money spent for this contract will spend an additional $20,000 to $25,000 per year for garden services to sort and package these batteries in preparation for transportation. Along with being able to have these batteries collected at the curb, the household batteries can be dropped off at over 30 locations throughout Marion County. The two main locations are our Salem Kaiser and North Marion Transfer Stations. In addition, you can find these additional sites of over 30 different locations on our website, mcrecycles.net, just by clicking under the curbside programs and then clicking on battery recycling. Getting back to the contract, bids were solicited using our Orphan System for transportation and recycling services. Three bids were received and reviewed. Universal Recycling Technologies LLC provides the lowest overall cost for service. This contract will cover expenses related to transportation and recycling of non-rechargeable batteries, household batteries, with an estimated cost of about $70,000 per year. This is a reduction from our previous contract of about, on average, about four cents per pound. So it's actually a reduced, kind of unexpected, cost for us. This contract is not to exceed $697,500 and will continue through December 31st, 2021. And I guess in conclusion, our battery cycling program is just one of many curbside programs that are available to Marion County residents and businesses. And if you wish to look for more additional detailed information, you can go to mcrecycles.net and see how many other different reuse, reuse, compost programs we have out there for residency. Enjoy.
I do, well, a couple, yeah, comment and a question. First of all, yes, you're right, there, shipping and those other types of technical things might cause the ups and downs, but we had a little bit of an issue right around 2011, 2012, where the board got involved with Batteries Plus and whether or not they were actually...
And the state, actually.
Yeah, and the state, right, using our recycling program as a way to enhance their bottom line, I guess.
Correct.
So we have actually acted on that. So we have actually acted on that and it looks like we're kind of, it's interesting because it just goes all over the place and it's pretty much kind of back down to where it was prior to, I mean, kind of on an average, prior to where it was before all of that happened. So, interesting. So my question is, well, and the second comment I wanted to make is that the person on the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council that really promoted this was Ellen Twist, who was also the same reason why we had the training that we had this year on public meetings and public records. So she was quite an advocate and really passionate about this particular issue. But I ran across something and I, it was really quite by accident and I just Googled and found the same information. And that is that it says most disposable alkaline batteries contain little or no mercury. And so it says as a result, they're considered non-toxic enough to toss out with the household trash. And then it's rechargeable batteries that have cadmium, cobalt, and lead and are, they're concerned about them getting into landfills and so on. So given kind of, it sounds like there's changes in, in the way batteries are, are created.
Correct.
So, and I, you know, I'm, I mean, as I'm thinking through this, I'm thinking about what we do at the fair when we try to use compostable silverware. And you can't really tell what's compostable and what's not. And so if some vendor brings in the non-compostable and it just contaminates the whole thing. So I'm assuming that to ask the public, because I've told my stories before about my Harvard educated children and husband that can't figure out how to do the recycling thing correctly, if you say only rechargeable batteries need to go in and be recycled because they're dangerous and the other ones you could throw out, probably wouldn't work that well. But tell me kind of in this new environment, why this makes sense to spend this much money recycling batteries?
I appreciate that. It's part of my education also. Because when I think of a battery, I think of a double A or triple A that we're using in our remote controls or games, et cetera. The ones that are really of issue are kind of the button batteries that we have in watches and other, you know, more high-tech electronic devices. Those actually contain mercury. And those are, that's more the issue we're trying to address. This program does also take the rechargeables and there's value to those. That actually helps offset some of our costs for programs. So we kind of recoup those. But I think traditionally, people are focused on the double A, the nine volt, et cetera, as to pull those out of the stream. But it's really these other more dangerous batteries that the focus is.
All right. That's, that's good to know. Thank you.
Kind of overlaps with what I was thinking, but I should say, I remember I was on the other side as a garbage collector in 99 and another name that was pushing it hard was Jerry Carter, a longtime employee for Marion County. But it kind of made sense that these items ought to be, if we could easily pull them out of the waste stream and not run them through the burner, although I never heard that, that, you know, there were any noticeably different emissions, but it just makes sense that you wouldn't want them to go through. But I've had some questions, Brian, and maybe you can't answer now. When we talk about recycling, what does it really mean? Do they pull them apart for components? Do they recharge them or rehabilitate them some way? I'm kind of curious to what happens after we pay to say goodbye to them?
Right. And that was one of the things that we were kind of surprised about because it's the metals that they're actually recovering and recycling out of these batteries and how that volume or values dropped over the years. We kind of expected to see those costs increase, but in turn we saw a decrease. But it's mainly the metals is what they're looking for, for recovering and making sure that that's taken out of the system.
And if there's chemicals, acids, et cetera, are those extractable too? Or is that a?
And I don't know exact part of it. I know it's the metal components that is what they're really after.
Okay. And then I'm wondering, just because we saw, you know, when it was available, we were suddenly the Mecca of batteries recycling and thought, everybody in the world, we wanted to get them here. But what do other counties do? Do they have any programs?
There are a few across the state. Many don't offer what we do at the curb. It's kind of a unique system, more of a depot or a drop-off. And that's predominantly where our volume comes through is still through our transfer stations with just general public visiting and dropping them off there. The second most would be curbside collected from, from our franchise haulers that participate. So we're unique in Marion County. We kind of go above and beyond, I'd like to say.
Good. I didn't know that the big, it was rechargeable only, despite how long I've been around, that you're really interested in, or that are perhaps some more dangerous. I'd say that's not a good word, but more. And I'm thinking like at Christmas, how many batteries, cartons of batteries who went through to light up all these, oh, they're really fun trucks.
Toys. They're toys.
Let's be serious.
Right. Everything needs a battery now.
Learning opportunities. I thought you could acknowledge that.
Yeah. Well, and then if you get one of those little books that talk, you do have to have one of those button batteries. And so, you know, I didn't have them at home and, you know, you gotta have the book. Battery trip to Walgreens to get something fast. Yeah. All right. Well, this has been an interesting conversation. I'll go ahead and move approval of the contract for services with Universal Recycling Technologies LLC for $697,500 for the transportation and recycling of non-rechargeable batteries through December 31st, 2021.
And I'll second the motion. Further discussion. And then I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. The last thing to do, and this is a rather short list, is to read the places we'll be together. In fact, I wonder about the first one. The next event we have is at noon in Woodburn, Woodburn, Marion County. So I shouldn't even list it because it's just me. Oh, my goodness.
Have your lime drink if you would.
They're good. Jerritos? I'll probably say that wrong, but I do look forward to that. So that's a Woodburn. It is available to people. It's not just a, it's not a closed meeting at all. If you'd like to come and speak with, I guess, me in this case, or local Woodburn officials, you're welcome. It's a Woodburn, Marion County meeting. It's at Luis's Takeria, 523 Front Street in, it says Salem, but it's in Woodburn. And that's at noon, noon today. The next item is Monday, the 6th, 8:30, Calendar Review, Silverton Conference Room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. That's followed at 9 o'clock, same location of Management Update, 9 to 11 that's scheduled. Tuesday, 9 to 11, a work session on capital projects update, Silverton Conference Room, 555 Court Street Northeast. And then the next board meeting next Wednesday, February 8th at 9 o'clock here in the Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street, Salem, first floor. So you were gone last week and I did give the opportunity to be funny.
I watched it. I watched it on the computer. I did, yes.
Was it funny? No, probably not.
You looked like you were enjoying yourself. Let's just put it that way. I'm not sure that Commissioner Cameron was quite enjoying it the same way you did.
I didn't mean to be, if that's what came to.
Yeah, but, no.
So anything else you want to say, anything mean about Utah?
Well, I was at, well, no, I was at a social innovation conference. It was around how you set up financing systems and also data collection systems in order to, for governments and foundations to fund programs that work. So, you know, the question is whether we do a lot of services in Marion County. And I think, I mean, this is one of the reasons, I'll just flip it around, that I think the reentry initiative has been so successful because they really moved to this evidence-based practices model. So instead of doing what your gut tells you or what tradition says, or I've had 25 years of experience, I can look at somebody and know what they need, you use these evidence-based assessment tools and you put them into interventions like cognitive behavioral therapy and things that, that you do to fidelity and, and it works. And so they're just trying to encourage more of that. So it was real, a very interesting conference. But I think really the whole value of going down there for me, in addition to just learning some things, was the meeting that I had Friday morning with a couple of policy analysts in the Salt Lake County Mayor's Office who were working on their homelessness initiative. They've been doing that for two or three years, I think, and really had a lot of stories to tell, are very interested in helping us out with that in Marion County. So they said they'd actually come to, to Salem next spring and I guess would be this coming spring to be able to meet with people that are working on it. So that was, it was a lot of fun to hear how they've, their war stories, you know, because we have a few war stories of our own here as we've been working through that. We have the last meeting of our homeless initiative task force coming up next Tuesday on the 7th, so.
I was going to ask you about that, frankly. I know you, they were in our office, you were in office yesterday. Not conclusions or a report, but when are you going to present what your, what those conclusions are? Do you have an event planned or how are you going to get that out?
Well, we're going to come to each of the city councils and boards. So I'd like to just do a presentation here at a board session. We just need to have H P get that scheduled with, get on the agenda planning, I guess is how we do it, and, and get that scheduled as a presentation relatively soon. We've been working on a strategic plan that we're going to adopt. You know, the whole focus of this group was to really just figure out what the priorities were, what we needed to do to address the problem. There's some long-range solutions and some short-term solutions. And it just crosses the gamut all the way from needing more affordable housing to needing support services for the mentally ill, to how do we work with veterans, runaway and homeless youth, I mean, domestic violence. There's just a lot of different categories of people that are considered homeless. Seniors, we had that discussion. Beth Jackson from the Northwest Senior Disability Services came and did a presentation at our last meeting that we had in January. So we're learning a lot and then, and then we're really going, we're going to shape and create a, a group that will be the implementation group that will have a staff person that can actually make it happen. So that's the plan. And Mayor Bennett from, newly elected Mayor Bennett from Salem, very, very interested. They, I saw in the paper yesterday that they had a, kind of a community forum last night. And in preparation for that, they did a phone survey. They hired a consultant group, Eco Northwest, and homelessness was the number one concern of the people surveyed in Salem. It jumped from 6% a year ago in March 2016 to like 17%. So, I mean, it jumped 10 points in a year. So, I mean, certainly on everybody's mind, I think that it's a concern. It was higher, way higher than anything else, including bridges and roads and things like that, unfortunately. But I read the report yesterday morning. There was a link to it on the Statesman Journal website. It was very interesting. So, yeah, we're working on that.
Just because I mentioned it last week, I, I talked about I was going to go to St. Helens and testified, D L C D about this getting people out of their cars initiative that they're imposing. And I've mentioned it, Management Update's not new to you. It wasn't very successful. They, there were two issues. The group voted unanimously both times opposite of what I'd like, but I'm glad I went. I kind of laid things out. I saw them thinking about what it really means, but they, they still want to head. My next fight will be the next committee now implements those, those changes into their, into their O A Rs. Is that what you call it?
Administrative rules, right.
Administrative rules. That's what I was thinking. So I'll still be needling them. But so far, I'm the only one in the state that cares and should tell me something.
There are a lot of other people that care. You're probably one of the few people in the state that take the time to go and testify.
Anyway, a little, but I, you know what I told them to start with? I said, I've, I've had people come here and testify in front of us and when they get done, this is, you don't even watch how you body language in this day and age, but when they've gotten done, I've thought, what was that all about? Why would they waste their time or mind to say something they don't get it, you know? And so I started my conversation with this group as I, as I come here. I'm that guy talking to you. And I think it was probably true, but it makes me respect, people see things differently.
Right.
And, and they're all, they're all valid. And it's coming, to come up with a decision, you need to weigh the whole thing.
Yep. And by the time we figure out what, who was right, we'll be long gone and it'll be our children and grandchildren that are going to be bearing the consequences of the decisions.
Anyway, it was a long drive and I felt good about it. It's the best I can do. All right. Anything else this morning?
I just wanted to mention one other thing. Legislature started convening today. It's February 1st. And I've got a couple of bills that I've been working on. I think we've talked about them, but one of them's on child support. And we had a meeting yesterday morning with Kate Richardson from the Oregon Department of Justice. She works in, oversees the child support program there. And then Conchetta Schwestinger and a couple of people that work in the District Attorney's Office. She's just been incredibly helpful to work with. So the idea was, I've been on this reentry, that it's the task, it's Senate Bill 969, the Task Force on Reentry Housing and Employment. It's a state task force. I got appointed by the governor to be on that task force. And we've been meeting for a year. Jackie Winters is one of the co-chairs of it, trying to figure out some ideas on state level on reentry, what legislation do we need? And one of the areas that came up really was on the debt burden that people can have when they come out of prison. And so, you know, they, they have to pay supervision fees. They have sometimes old fines and fees from, you know, driving and things that they've done that, you know, mistakes that they've made before they went in, lifestyle they had before they went in. And then oftentimes, if they are owing child support, there's an ability that they have to modify that child support order when they go into prison to say, hey, I'm in prison. I don't have any income. I can't pay $500 a month anymore because I'm not working. But either they don't realize how important it is, the paperwork gets lost, they set it aside and say, I'll do it later. I mean, a lot of people do things like that, even if they're not going to prison. And, or they, and we've, I've even heard stories where they send emails to the District Attorney's Office and say, hey, I'm in prison, but the email isn't sufficient. You have to, you have to actually do a modification that's a legal document and fill it out correctly. So that 500 a month or 300 or whatever, it just keeps piling on over the course of 12 months, two years, three years. And then when they get out, they have all of this past due child support. And what it does is, first of all, and Conchetta talked about this, kind of gives false expectations to the, to the custodial parent, the mom generally, that they're going to get all this back payment when someone comes out, has a felony record, they're probably not going to have the same earning power they had before they went in. Secondly, it discourages the person coming out from getting legitimate employment because now they, they'll have their wages garnished and so they'll do cash jobs. And sometimes those are the same types of jobs they had before they went in that got them into trouble. Right. And so the whole idea is let's get a realistic child support payment that they'll actually be willing to pay and get legitimate employment. So, and then the family strengthened and the mom's getting some child support and they're on the straight and narrow. So I created an idea because, you know, we kind of missed some deadlines and wanted to get in early. And turns out that part of my idea was good, the way Legislative Council did it. The other part of it actually violates federal rule. I said, well, you can't, the retroactive part, you can't do a retroactive modification by federal rule. So Kate and Conchetta and their group has come up with language that will pass the legal test. And we're presenting that as an amendment to the bill. But anyways, that was really fun bill to work on. The other one is, and we've had some discussion about this recently, accessory dwelling units on farmland and recreational vehicles, kind of as a type of accessory dwelling unit on farmland. So those will be two separate bills because the RVs is sort of a different set of statute than the, the accessory dwelling units. We're having a meeting on that. I actually have a meeting with Representative Clem this afternoon because our hunch is that it may go to his committee. And so I wanted to kind of get his feelings about it. And then Friday, we have a meeting with all of the different interest groups, Thousand Friends of Oregon, the Farm Bureau, Department of Agriculture, the Builders Association, Rick Massey, who's been on our committees, is going to represent them. John Chandler and I have talked. And so we're hoping we can find some common ground around this issue. And, you know, it's one of those things where you got to run it up the flagpole and, but, you know, we, it, as you, as you're aware, we've had so many issues. Now, sometimes certainly we don't want to have trailer parks on farmland and, you know, we've had some complaints and we don't want to have people running electrical cords and things like that and being unsafe. But at the same time, someone's in a rural residential area or if someone has a farmhouse and they want to put like a granny flat out behind it, why is it that we require them to have a doctor's note that our planting people have to review and decide whether they're sick enough to merit that and, or, you know, be on it 120 days, then you got to move the thing off. It just, or have a no bathroom, right, and a mini fridge and a microwave, but no stove, especially in this time where we have so many people looking for housing. The vacancy rates are so low and it's just so hard for people to, to find a place to live. So the, the proposal says one per property within 100 feet of the main residence. So we're not creating apartments or putting something out in the middle of farmland. I was told that actually the, oh, it was Mark Neistrom that told me that when there was, that there was some opposition by the groups that really support the land use laws about putting a cell phone tower out on farmland because the base of the cell phone tower was taking away prime farmland. So obviously, an RV in the middle of a field is not what people are going to be willing to support, but having it close to the farmhouse on the same property, perhaps they'll be willing to say, sure, that makes sense. So we'll see how it goes.
I just had one other thing. I am meeting myself with today separately. I don't know why that's significant with Senator Winters and Senator Courtney. So I was hoping you wouldn't say anything that was going to have to be mentioned earlier when we were talking about the animal rescue. And that concerns Newburg Dundee bypass and trying to get it finished off so they can start working. Well, two things. One, to minimize impacts, the dog, which is just being overrun. And I guess that's it. The Donald, which is just being overrun. And I guess that's it.
Yeah.
And they're trying to get Donald going on itself.
Yeah, I'm glad you're doing that, because that was such a surprise to me. You know, I, I hadn't tracked the, actually, the design of the Newburgh Dundee Bypass. You just heard they got money, you know. I went, I actually went to the, when Leslie Lewis was there.
You might have been there at the time.
To the big party, you know, and everybody was all patting themselves on the back, and it's so wonderful. And then, when they come and say, well, we only had money to go this far.
And dump it out into Marion County.
Right, yeah, I was like, what in the heck?
And we fought against that how many times over these last decade.
Oh, yeah, we've had more resolutions.
And essentially, that's what we let happen.
Right.
So, I'm, I wouldn't say let happen, that's not a good choice of words. That's what's happened.
Yeah.
The last thing I wanted to say, you and I, Commissioner Mill, were involved in selecting legislators and stuff as openings.
Yes.
And, and Vic Gilliam is one that we chose, and one that I've been real proud of. I'm so sorry to hear of his troubles and see it. Our other Commissioner Cameron, very, very close to him, so...
He's a wonderful, wonderful man. I was very saddened when I...
That was a good choice we made, but the thing, apparently, or not apparently, we will make another choice in the near future. And we're kind of the minority, it's a split district between Clackamas and Marion County, it's mostly Clackamas, and so, there'll be percentages. But, that's being set up. And I guess by saying it now, I encourage people that are interested in, in seeking that position to make, I don't know who they'd talk to. How would you do that?
Well, I...
Oh, your local Republican Party, yes.
Right, the central committees are gonna have, they have to figure out somehow how to, how to put those three candidates forward. And I don't know, Gloria, do you know the rules around that, or when you have two counties, is it two central committees that work together on that, or how does that work?
I'll have to double-check. We haven't done one as, in a while for the split counties.
Yeah, I mean, it would be the same process that they used way back when we were appointed Representative Gilliam.
Right.
Yeah, I remember that meeting, but it's been a long...
I said it was Malino, it doesn't matter, was it?
I think it was at Mount Angel.
No?
It was, it was at a fire hall.
I picture a school. Either way, we're both...
Right, because Eric Hofer was there.
I don't even remember that name.
Yeah.
Oh.
Margaret Hoffert's, Hoffert's...
Yes, Hofer.
Hofer, right, okay, sorry.
And it was Vic, Vic Hofer.
Was it Vic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway.
Right, all right.
That's enough. Let's call this meeting adjourned.